Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We want to welcome everyone to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to consider conditional use permit requests, and to review appeals from the decision of the staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to then make decisions in such matters. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines and have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a moment here and I'll introduce our board and staff members. On the audience's left is Cindy Smith. Next to her is Marlaus Jones. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. To my left is Lynn Carlson. Joining us shortly will be Dave Gere. And I am pleased to introduce, there he is now, hello Dave. And I'm pleased to introduce our newest member, appointee to this board, Justin Gross on the audience's right. Justin was recently appointed by the city council. He was nominated by Josh Mandelbaum to serve as the representative from Ward III. And Justin brings a great professional and personal background of interest. He was on the Neighborhood Revitalization Board for many years and does a lot of work in community activism and neighborhood improvement. So, welcome, Justin.
Thank you.
And at the same time, while we like to welcome new faces, Justin is replacing John Chido. John had served as the Ward III representative for the last four-plus years. And John was a fellow South Sider like myself, so we'll certainly miss John. But again, want to welcome Justin as we move forward. I'll go ahead and introduce our city staff. In the front row, we have Eric Lundie, city planner, Bert Droste, city planner, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer, and sitting to my left is Judy Parks Cruz, who is our city's legal counsel. Judy has helped sub here on the board in past hearings, but she will now formally replace city attorney Glenna Frank. Glenna served on the board here, was assigned to the Board of Adjustment for seven years almost, I think, but she's doing some other legal work for the city, so we'll miss Glenna. But again, we're looking forward to working with Judy. So, thank you. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and go over our procedure here for today. For some of you, this may be the first time you've been in front of us. You may hope it's the only time you'll be in front of us. So, we'll guide you through the process here today, so don't worry about that, but I'll go ahead and explain how our process works. First of all, while this is an open, public meeting, this is a legal hearing. The session is being recorded, both audible and video. In fact, we should be broadcasting live on the city's cable channel, or if you have insomnia, we're probably in reruns now at 1:00 AM. The board members have received a copy of this agenda and the staff recommendations. A copy of the agenda and the staff recommendation is available just outside the door here, on the tray right by the front door. So, when I'm through with my opening remarks, if you haven't grabbed an agenda, feel free to step up and get a copy of that. This board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each appeal will be announced in the order as presented on the agenda. City staff will first give a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified during the staff presentation. The appellant or a representative of the appellant will then be allowed to speak first with their testimony. They will be allowed to give up to 10 minutes to present their appeal for their case. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. Following that, anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed up to five minutes for their comments. The applicant will be allowed up to three minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments. All speakers are requested to speak only from the podium here at the front left where the microphone is, and to begin their presentation by first giving both their name and address. So, if you're here as a property owner, or resident, or the appellant themselves, give your address. If you're here in a professional capacity, as an engineer, architect, or attorney, you're welcome to give your business address. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations. If necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. After testimony, the board will then close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will immediately deliberate the request and we will make a decision here today. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until about, I'd say about a week from now, if you need to go to the permit and development center for any building permits. This allows the decision of the board to be documented in the form of a decision in order. A copy of that decision in order will then be provided to you, as well as to the city's permit staff. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. Within the agenda, the front portion of the agenda has items listed on the consent portion of the agenda. According to the agenda, these items are not planned to be individually discussed, and they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations in the staff report, unless there's a person present in the audience, or a member of this board, that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. And I will come back to that here in a minute and we'll work you through the consent agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court. So, if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. So, if you want to share any documents, photos, drawings, or illustrations with us, you'll either have to give those to staff to keep, or be prepared to provide a suitable copy of that for the record. Just a couple of housekeeping items. We ask that you avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to not be disruptive or distracting from the hearing, and you're doing a fine job of that, thank you. We also ask to ensure that your cellphone has been silenced. Again, no ringtones is good, thank you. And if you need to use the restroom, just walk straight through the door here. You don't have to go downstairs, just pass the staircase on the left are restrooms. If needed, we will take a break around 3:00 or 3:30 for five minutes. Once the agenda item you are interested in has been completed, you are welcome to leave the hearing, or you can stick around for the next two or three hours if you would like to hear the rest of the cases. So, speaking of that, we'll have Bert give us an update on the agenda. Bert, do we have any proposed changes to today's agenda?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bert Droste, planner for the city. I just have a few small suggestions. Item number 11 is the appeal at the corner of 32nd and Forest Avenue that has been withdrawn by the applicant, so that appeal will not be heard today. Then items 14, 15, and 16, staff has recommended approval of, and the applicants agree to our conditions, so we're comfortable moving those to the consent agenda if the board would make a motion to move those. And again, that's item 14, an appeal for a conditional use for a reception hall at 100 Indiana Avenue, a variance for a sign on the east facade of Merle Hay Mall, and then a conditional use to allow sales of alcohol throughout the, or sales and consumption of alcohol throughout the airport's concourses.
Okay, so what I'll do here for the audience's benefit first is, again, item 11, a variance request at 3121 Forest has been withdrawn. So, if there was anybody here to give testimony, we're not going to be hearing that case at all. They'd have to refile down the line. So, staff is proposing to add item 14 to the consent agenda for just granting approval straight up. That'd be a conditional use permit at 100 Indiana Avenue. Is there anybody in the audience that would be opposed to granting the requested conditional use on Indiana Avenue? Just raise your hand if you would be opposed to that. Okay, seeing none. Item 15 is a variance request related to Merle Hay Mall. Is there anybody here opposed to the variance as presented in item 15? Just raise your hand. Seeing none. There's a conditional use permit request, again, that's at the Des Moines Airport, related to tavern-type area and consumption, sale and consumption of alcohol in designated areas. So, anybody here opposed to item 16? Okay, seeing none. Would there be any questions or any opposition from staff, or from the board? If not, would there be a motion to move 14, 15, 16 to the consent agenda?
I say move.
Okay, we got a motion by Marlaus.
I'll second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so what we do now, folks, is I'm going to read through these again. This is a rare agenda when the majority of things are things that staff kind of supports, and we're kind of looking at maybe granting approvals for a whole bunch of things. So, what I'm going to do, if anybody's opposed to granting the requested exceptions or appeals here, just raise your hand, I'm going to read through them quick. Item one is an exception request at 2007 East 33rd Street. Is there anybody here opposed to granting the exception to item one? Okay, you're not in favor of that item, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I believe he's the applicant.
Okay, all right. Are you not in favor of the conditions that the city would be placing on you in granting the appeal? The city wants to let you have the extra eight foot you'd like to have. So, the city's supporting your request, is that correct, Bert?
Yes, we have recommended approval, subject to some conditions. I was with him on the phone yesterday, and he said he agreed to them.
Okay.
Is the city allowing?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm.
You're okay then, okay, cool. Okay, all right. And I know this can be kind of confusing, but yeah, I think you guys are on the same page. All right, item two, is there anybody opposed to granting the exceptions on, at 111657 Street? Just raise your hand. Seeing none. Item three is an exception request at 4002 Ashby, any opposition? Item four is an exception at 2725 Cambridge Street, any opposition to that? And if you are the applicant, even if the city's recommending approval, you'd have to comply with their conditions that they've laid out. Item five is an exception request at 801 18th Street, any opposition, going once, going twice? Item six is a variance request at 3900 Southeast 34th Street, anyone with concerns on that one? Okay, seeing none. Item seven is an amendment to a conditional use permit near 608 Southeast 30th Street, any opposition there? Okay, seeing none. Item eight is an exception request at 1205 Leland Avenue, anyone opposed to that one? Okay. Item nine is a conditional use permit, exception and variance, at area of 2901 C, B, and Q Street, anybody opposed to that project? Okay, seeing none. And then item 10 would be an exception request at 720 Broad Street, anybody here in opposition to that? Okay, so basically, from the board's perspective, we've got items 1 through 10 on consent, we've added 14, 15, and 16. If there are any questions or concerns, would there be a motion to grant approval of the consent agenda, including approvals for items 1 through 10, 14, 15, 16?
I say move.
All right, motion by Marlaus.
I'll second that.
All right, his first motion, all right. Appreciate your second on that. Okay, so we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so if you were here for items 1 through 10, 14, 15, or 16, you've been approved, about a week from now, you get a copy of that decision in order, and I thank you for coming down today. So, we'll let things clear out here for a few seconds, and then we'll start with the remaining part of the hearing.
This is amazing.
This is like rare.
This is a rarity.
No kidding, this is amazing.
Our new members bringing up different names.
Yeah.
Yeah, sprinkle of fixing dust.
You bet. Have a nice day. Thanks for coming down.
So.
Crazy.
Okay, so on our regular portion of the agenda, I believe this should bring us to item 12, a conditional use and variance request in the vicinity of 3104 University Avenue.
All right. Number 12 is a request by Come and Go to build a new gas station convenience store that would potentially sell alcoholic liquor in addition to wine and beer, and would also have eight fueling pumps. The subject property was recently rezoned to NPC. The map doesn't show that yet, but that rezoning was approved on November 4th this month. So, it was rezoned to NPC. NPC limits any gas station to no more than six fueling locations, so they'd need an appeal of that limitation. And then also NPC requires a conditional use permit for any sale of liquor, and in order to sell liquor, they would have to meet a 500-foot separation distance. There's a property here on the northeast, northwest corner of the map that is a church that contains both a church use and a daycare use, so they do not meet the separation distance requirement. I would also point out that as a gas station, they're allowed to sell beer and wine by right, as long as they don't exceed 40% of the overall sales from that. Next, I'll show you the layout of the site. They have, at staff's direction, put the building out at the corner of University and 31st Street, so it's going to have more of an urban feel than most gas stations that you see around town. So, there's a one on Ingersoll in front of the Food Saver that has the same layout, where the building is along the front property lines, and then the gas pumps are screened back behind the building. Again, as I mentioned, they would have eight fueling locations here, so in order to have this fourth one, they would need the variance to the separation. Again, it'd be a brand-new convenience store there at the corner that would sell the alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer. Here are some photos of the existing gas station that's there that would be removed. I'd also point out that there's this six-unit multifamily structure back here that would be removed from the site as well. I think they're still trying to decide if they're able to move it, or if it'll have to be demolished.
Wow. Big, big move.
And you can see it's one of Come and Goes older gas stations. So, this new building would be a big improvement over what's there today. And then the consent map, we had one card come back in, or I'm sorry, in support from the Drake Neighborhood Association. Staff looked at this like we do all variances, and as you know, it's hard for staff to recommend approval of variances, given that they would have to prove a hardship, and meeting the test of hardship means that they would have to prove that without the variances, there's no other economic use of the property. So, we did have to, I guess, recommend denial, but we did provide some alternative conditions in the staff report if the board is inclined to grant the variances. And I won't read through those, but they're just the standard conditions that you would see staff recommend on other gas station convenience stores selling alcoholic liquor. And I would also point out that you could approve the variance to the pumps, exclusive of the variance to the separation distance. If you only wanted to grant one, you wouldn't have to lump them both together. Any questions for me?
Yeah, questions for Bert from the board? Bert, I might just lead off with a couple clarification ones. The variance on the conditional use for business selling liquor, wine, and beer, since they were already selling wine and beer, if they wanted to continue to do that in the new store, would they have needed to, they wouldn't have needed a variance?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Since it's zoned NPC, they're allowed to sell wine and beer.
Okay.
As a gas station, without a conditional use. They would have to provide 150 feet of separation, which they do meet the 150.
So, it's basically, yeah, we would be selling alcohol anyway, but hey, we just want to add true liquor, which I usually relate to, that's whiskey, vodka, distilled things.
Right.
Okay, all right. And related to the six fueling locations in code, that doesn't mean nozzles or pumps, it just means where cars are located, right? One, two, three, four, five, six.
So, it's probably, it'd be three pumps with.
Right.
Each pump has two fueling.
But you're assuming that one car occupies the side, the fueling location at a time, and that's it?
Right.
So, basically, six would be allowed, they're asking for eight on that.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And since it's zoned NPC, the site plan does have to go to the Plan and Zoning Commission, which it's set to go to the Plan and Zoning Commission tomorrow night, and the public hearing there is contingent upon them getting that fourth pump.
Okay.
Did this just recently get rezoned?
Yeah, on November 4th, it was rezoned by the city council.
Are there any other convenience stores along there that have eight pumps?
I don't know in this area if there are, not on University.
Mm-mm. You'd have to get down to what, 22nd or 23rd?
You know, I bet at 6th and University, or 7th and University.
Oh, yeah.
Quick trip there. I would venture a guess that that has at least eight.
Okay.
Not more.
That's the only one I can think of.
All right. Thanks, Bert. And Bert, with the apartment building going away, and I think that's probably the general area here on the bottom of your map, would they have, they have a requirement to have sufficient screening to the south, because then what, do we have a single-family home to the south?
Yeah, there is a single-family home there. You can see they're proposing a row of evergreens and a fence, so they would meet the screening requirements.
And the fence would have to be of a certain kind of design or architecture for.
Yeah.
To blend in.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions for Bert? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so the way the hearing works now is the applicant, or their representative, gets to present first, so come on up. And we just need your name and address, and you can have up to 10 minutes to tell us about your case.
Hi, I'm Siobhan Harmon with Come and Go. We're located at 1459 Grand Avenue in Des Moines. So, just to put this in context, this is a rendering of the new building, and we actually started working with the City of Des Moines, the Neighborhood Association, the Drake Neighborhood Association, and Drake to redesign this building, actually, prior to the new code being adopted. So, we made the decision at that time that we would adopt to the new code, even though we could have pushed the project through under the old code, but we wanted to be in compliance with the new code. Currently, today, we have two MPDs, which means that we have four fueling positions. And if you've ever been to the store during peak hours, you'll see that the lot, traffic does not flow well through the lot, you know, and we are going for four, because that's what our projections on fuel sales show that we need at this location. We had tried to bring this location through about 10 years ago to rebuild it, and, you know, at that time, we were going with a full canopy, which means that there's 10 MPDs, but we've really, you know, scaled it back with this. So, as I mentioned, we've worked really closely with Drake University and the Neighborhood Association through this process. We have incorporated their comments into the design of the store, like, for instance, they would like a bike fix-it station, so we've added that to the site plan. We do, we will have bike racks. You know, one thing I don't know if you know about Come and Go, but our stores are LEED certified, so we have 108 LEED-certified stores in our network of 440 stores. We, we're not certifying LEED going forward, because it's a very expensive process, and we just look at it like it's the right thing to do to build sustainable buildings. So, you know, we do things like LED lighting, we recycle when we, when we do demo, you know, landscaping, et cetera, all of that we incorporate. You know, the, our business model has also changed over the years, so we're really pushing fresh food, as opposed to the usual, you know, beef jerky, chips, Powerade-type things. Believe it or not, water is the number-one seller in the store, so you'll notice, you know, our cooler doors have a lot of water sales. So, you know, that's the reason for us asking for the, the extra MPD, is just, that's what fuel sales dictate.
Can, can you talk a little bit about the Morrell Flats? I, I mean, it's kind of a lovely structure, I hate to see it demolished, so is, is the whole project based on the fact that you need that extra space, so you would need to demolish or move that structure? Are there folks living there now, or is it low-income?
So, it's market, you know, it's market rate, there's eight units in it. The building has been totally remodeled, and that includes even removing the original windows and enlarging, and enlarging the window openings. It's had, you know, foundation repairs. The only original structure that we believe still exists are the, the main staircase going through it, and some of the bathroom flooring. It's not, it's not a historic, you know, building. You nobody, you know, when they look at the criteria, nobody famous, you know, lived there. The only thing it has is that it was built at the time that the Drake Neighborhood was founded. We've been working with Neighborhood Development Corporation, which is a quasi-public-private group, and they are looking at relocating it, but there's a major shortfall in funding, so it's 1.7 million to move the building all in, and that's assuming that, you know, ground could be found within close proximity. It has, so current, the building, the way it's built, it's got three stories of apartments above ground, and then it has a garden level, so the, the two bottom apartments are half in the ground, half out of the ground. And as a result of that, the building has to be cut off at the garden level, and you move the six upper apartments, and then a new basement would need to be dug, and two more apartments to be put down there. It doesn't make any economic sense to move it as six units. So, NDC has done a full analysis on it, and I don't know if that went to the city or to Josh Mandelbaum, but that report was turned in. I have not seen it, but I think there's about a $300,000 funding shortfall on, you know, NDC being able to move it.
So, if I, if I understand correctly, it looks like a very large apartment building, but actually, it's only got eight units total in it then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, it's maybe not as big as it appears.
Yeah.
So, are there current tenants living?
There are. So, we, they've known for about a year, so when their, when their leases came up for renewal, we put them on month-to-month, starting a year ago. And, you know, we've told them that we'll, you know, give them, you know, plenty of notice to move, so, so those notices will probably be going out after we get through the holidays.
Will there be any assistance and relocation of those tenants?
Um, no, they'll, I mean, they'll just have time to find, you know, someplace else to live, because again, I mean, it's market, they're market, they're not.
Okay.
You know, it's not low-income housing. It's actually a condo building. It was condoed a number of years back, but, you know, we've been running it as apartments.
Okay. All right. Siobhan, part of the proposal would be, you're seeing a variance to sell liquor rather than just beer and wine, and depending on certain stores, whether, you know, other convenience store chains, and even your own, sometimes that's just out on a shelf when you sell it, but within these requirements, you'd be required to keep that within a locked case or behind a counter, only accessible to employees for the liquor.
Correct.
You guys are okay with that?
Yes, we are. We've read through the conditions, and we're, we're fine with these.
Okay.
And we do a lot of these things at our stores today, you know, like at KEO. This matches, you know, what we're doing at our store in KEO.
Gotcha. All right. Any other questions for Siobhan?
So, just one.
Yeah.
Comment about the liquor. So, you know, we currently have beer and wine, and we're, you know, asking for the liquor. So, Walgreens next door, they have a full liquor lineup at their store, so, you know, obviously, we want to be competitive with them, and they're within the 500 feet of Trinity Church as well, which has been there, I think, since 1939. Trinity Church as well, which has been there, I think, since 1939. You know, I'm not sure about the daycare, but, you know, again, they're within the distance as well.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other questions? Okay, appreciate your testimony, thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in support of the applicant's request? Anybody wants to support the applicant? We'll give them five minutes. She's going to donate that to Bert for the record, thank you. Okay, if there's nobody else to speak in support, is, do you want to speak in support, sir?
No.
Okay, so if there's no one else to speak in support, anybody here to speak in opposition now? You can just take turns, whoever that might be. And we just need your name, address, and you've got up to five minutes.
Yeah. I don't, I'm, my name's John Schneller, I'm president at Trinity Lutheran Church at 3223 University, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it, and I'm not necessarily in favor of it, so, but I went to that gas station last night, 6 o'clock, and let me tell you this, it is very, very difficult to get out. When I got done getting gas, I turned right onto 31st Street and went south to Cottage Grove, and go back to 35th Street to go back to church. So it's a little, there is some construction there right now, but I think they're making university fewer lanes, perchance, and so forth, and 31st Street does jog there, so there is, there was, there is a problem with traffic. The other thing is, they do sell regular gas, which I'm, I needed to, I not unlet it, and, let's see here. I've, I've, I've came to Des Moines in 1962, and I've been in that apartment building, and I hate to see it go. It's a beautiful building, in my opinion, but things march on, and it would be neat if they could move it, but it might not happen. Let's see here, the, I can't say it's an art deco building, but it's, it is nice, and so forth. The, I was not aware of the liquor problem, but, but obviously, it's within 500 feet of our church, so forth, but, let me think, anything, so, let's see. I guess that's it, so thank you very much.
Okay, appreciate you coming down today, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Okay, seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff?
I have a question, I'm not sure if staff can answer it or not, but I was wondering about the hours of operation, I should have asked the applicant, but I forgot.
Yeah, because that's normally your question.
It's normally my question.
Yeah, it's, since it's zoned NPC now, there aren't any limitations on the hours. If it were zoned C1 district, as it was previously, then there would be, but in the NPC, there's no limitation on hours.
So can I ask the applicant?
The board could put hours on, if you so choose.
Um, you can just nod from the audience, but is this a 24-hour-a-day store? Okay, so if you wanted to put a limitation, it wouldn't be like the hours of operation of the store, it'd have to be the hours they are allowed to sell liquor, right? If that's what you wanted to do, yeah.
I'm not sure I want to do anything, but I'm just curious. So if it's a 24-hour store, and then the gentleman mentioned the traffic issues, which I totally get, I live fairly close to that, it's a real busy corner with Drake and Walgreens and Come and Go, and with the street construction, it just exacerbates everything right now, so I'm hoping that that improves.
I wanted to point out that with the building pushed up to the corner, that actually forces the driveways to move farther from the intersection, which should help with traffic, because right now, the driveway to 31st, somewhere in this area, right here, and with this plan, it shifts it at least 100 feet to the south, so it should be a lot, maybe not 100 feet, but close, it would be a lot easier to do a right out onto 31st Street...
Sure.
Than it currently is.
Is there any possibility to put this lovely new building in and not take out the Morrel Flats?
I wish there was. I know when they were going through the rezoning process, council looked at that, and that's why they did the study on how much it would cost to relocate the building, or to design the site to save the building, but ultimately, when council approved the rezoning, they pretty much acknowledged that, yeah, the building...
Right.
It's going to hap, it can go, because they did the historic study to make sure it wasn't a contributing structure, and...
Right.
I, I share your sentiments.
And Bert, remind me on this, now, Come and Go owns the building now?
Yeah, they've owned the building now.
Where the apartment is.
So they're the landlord for the tenants of the Morrel Flats.
So they could tear the apartment building down tomorrow, if they wanted to?
They could, since it's older than 50 years, you would have to go through a demo review...
Okay, all right.
Process.
But it's already done that anyway, right?
But they've done the legwork that would be needed if, when they go through that, yeah.
Okay. And, so the variance for the alcohol isn't really related to the apartment, but theoretically, or I guess, relationship, the additional dispensers, or the additional fueling locations probably make the site bigger, which gets into the need to get rid of the apartment, potentially. They could maybe squeeze it?
I, I think just the building alone, by the time you have the building and the dumpsters, that's going to...
Do it anyway.
Require the building to go, regardless of there's six pumps or eight pumps.
Okay, all right. So then, if the variance requests weren't in front of us, and they met the historic review, they would tear the building down, and they wouldn't be in front of us for the building?
Right.
Okay, for the apartment, okay.
Hey, Bert, that Walgreens that's across the street?
Yeah.
Is that a 24-hour operation?
I think so. I'm not for sure, but I... Some, some are, and some aren't in the metro.
They don't open until 8:00.
Yeah, Eric knows.
They're only open until 8:00.
They don't open until 8:00.
Okay. He's got customer knowledge, apparently.
I think they open past midnight.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, some are 24 hours, but some aren't.
I need to get out in the middle of the night.
All right, do we have any further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion then, and we'll go to board deliberation. So this is where the board talks amongst itself, and...
Yeah, I think it's a rebuttal.
Oh, that's right, yes, thank you. Since we had someone speak in opposition to your request, you can have up to three minutes for any rebuttal or closing comment, if you so choose. You don't have to, but it's up to you guys.
You know, I think it was covered, but I think, you know, the biggest thing is the traffic flow on the site, and, you know, staff did a great job explaining that, you know, we are pushing the entrances back, so that, you know, that, that will help with the traffic flow. It's really hard to get out of there now, because basically, you're pulling into the middle of the intersection, even though you're on the side street. So, so pushing those entrances back will, will help that.
And while you guys are here, you do have pedestrian entrances on 31st and University...
Just 31st.
On 31st, okay.
Yeah.
And that is kind of a requirement with site plan, to have a, some kind of pedestrian entrance as well, so you're not just bricking off to the, to the street, right?
Yes, so with the new code, you know, the idea is to bring buildings so that there's interaction with the public, so we'll have the entrance on 31st Street, plus we'll have the main entrance to the store that faces the pumps. There will, or sorry, it's the university side, 31st, the long-walled side will not have a door.
Okay.
So this is not a door for public entrance.
Okay. It may look like a door, but it's not a door.
Yeah. It's emergency.
Sure, got you. Okay. All right, you guys good? All right, okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go back to board deliberation. Any thoughts or comments?
I do like the fact that they worked with the Drake Neighborhood on this, had some of their input, and the Drake Neighborhood seems to be in favor of it, and I think those are the people that are kind of more worried about the traffic patterns, and they've had a chance to look at those and everything. I do like the idea of having more fresh food availability, and making it more of a pedestrian-friendly store. I, I don't know about the eight pumps, but if that's necessary to make it feasible, but I do like the, the change, and, you know, making it more walkability, that's something that Des Moines is working hard for, so those are my thoughts.
The, this site definitely needs a facelift. I don't like to go there, it, to me feels, it doesn't feel secure to me all the time, so I tend not to go there very often, so I think having a newer building, a better look, maybe more traffic control, I think it's going to really add some improvement to the area.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts or any emotions?
There's a ton of development going on between this area and the eastern edge of Drake.
Yes, yes.
And Drake's an active participant with developers that they've retained, as well as themselves, so it's just part of progress. The, the fact that Walgreens sells liquor, I don't, I don't think we can restrict these guys from not being able to sell it, and they're within 500 feet of the church now. I think it's incumbent on them to be good citizens and make sure that that doesn't become a problem, and I don't think they will. I think they will make sure it's not a problem. As far as the eight pumps goes, I mean, I think that's just a fact of the traffic flows, and they do counts, and they figure that out, it's behind the building, I don't know that we're going to be looking at it as, as much, so I don't see that as being very intrusive either.
Sure.
So I think, you know, to Lynn's point, and Cindy, you made the same comment, I think they've worked pretty hard to make this fit in there, and they also have a model that they need to, the math needs to work for them. So I'm, I'm inclined to, to support it.
And what we're really looking at is just alcohol. Well, it's the alcohol sales, because they'd be expanding their conditional use permit to sell liquor as well as the beer and wine they're already permitted to, and then we'd add two more fueling locations beyond the six allowed. I think if we, as I mentioned always in the preamble, and through, you know, the board's reference, we've always got to consider our criteria under Chapter 18B, which does relate to ensuring that any location, design, construction, operation adequately safeguards the general welfare of the surrounding area, which I think this does. We have to have sufficient landscaping and structures to prevent noise, vibration, light, and any detrimental impact, I think they have covered that. And even within the variance test, it should not alter the essential character of the locality of the land. I think they generally will not alter that character, we already have a service station there, and as, as a number of you just said, this is going to be an improvement on that. So I think based on that criteria, I'm going to make a motion to approve the two requested variances as presented. Is there any other comments, or maybe a second? A second? Okay, we've got a...
Is conditional use including the conditional use of the...
The conditional...
Yeah, 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 the conditional use permit, and the two related variances as presented, yeah. Is that, good. All right. If that's clear enough for my colleagues, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Any opposed? One, okay, so motion carries five to one for approval. Thank you for coming in today, we wish you well in the Drake Neighborhood, keep up the good work. Okay, so on our agenda here, which is getting shorter by the moment, that'll bring us then to item number 13, a special permit in variance at 4645 East Broadway.
Mr. Chair members of the board, item number 13 is a request to retain a home-based business that involves the diesel engine repair. The subject property is located on the south side of East Broadway Avenue, just to the west of the intersection with East 46th Street. The subject property contains a single-family home, as well as two accessory structures. The applicant has been using the southernmost structure for the business. Again, East Broadway Avenue is along the north property line, they have a house here, and then two accessory structures, and they're only using the southern structure for their business, and they're also using this area here for the storage of vehicles awaiting service. The appeals, in order to grant the special permit for the home occupation, the board must also grant three other variances, and those include a variance of the provision that prohibits home occupation from having any outside storage of materials or products. They also need a variance of the provision that limits a home occupation to no more than one-half of the area of any accessory structure, and then they also need a variance of the provision that limits the home occupation to the owner occupants of the structure. In this case, the property is owned by a couple who is letting their family member and his family live in the structure. Here are some photos that have been taken, I believe these are from the code enforcement cases, when the inspectors went out and took, responded to some complaints. You can see they have some semis that are on the property awaiting repair. These are other photos of stuff on the site, and here's, I believe the sign might be taken down at this time, but this was in effect earlier this year, in July, the sign for the business was along East Broadway. And then here is the consent map. We had three cards in opposition from these properties here, and then barely within the 250 feet up here to the north, there was a card in opposition, as well as several emails that I'm passing around, that were received. So staff looked at this, and as I mentioned, in order to grant the special permit, the board would also have to grant three variances. In order to grant the variance, they have to demonstrate that there's no other viable use of the property without the variances. In this case, it's a single-family residential property, we feel that even without the business, it can yield a reasonable return from a single-family residential use. We do have concerns with the sound impacts that would come from a diesel repair business on this property that's in close proximity to so many other single-family residential uses, so we have recommended denial of the special permit and all of the variances that go along with it. Any questions for me?
Seems like we have a lot more letters and cards than we do...
Well, the emails aren't reflected on the consent map, it's only the cards that we received, but you're right, there are quite a few emails from other people within 250 feet, they just aren't colored in on the map.
Bert, generally speaking, this area of the city is not devoid of other zoning districts that would allow for these kinds of uses, is that correct? We have commercial, light industrial in this area?
This use would need an industrial, well, if it's purely a motor repair, it could be done in the C2 district, but if it's any auto body or any significant auto repair, then it could possibly need the M1 classification, but yes, there are M1 areas further northeast along Hubble, and also a little bit to the southwest.
Okay, which does include these types of businesses?
Right.
Diesel semi-repair, stuff like that, I can't think of the names, but there's some companies up that way, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this entire area that we're looking at here, is that, is that zoned A1?
Well, right now, it's zoned A1, yeah, this whole area here, this was all within the involuntary annexation that took place in 2009, and when it was annexed to the city at that time, it all came in zoned A1, agricultural, so it's currently zoned agricultural. With the new zoning ordinance that takes effect next month, this would become zoned neighborhood, and neighborhood district, which would be a single-family residential district.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Bert? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, so for this part of the hearing, the applicant, or the representative of the applicant, they can step up and get a speak first.
Hi, I'm Tracy DeWalt, from 628773rd Avenue, Indianola. A little history on this property for us is, my, my son-in-law and daughter looked at it to purchase it, the people that she was buying it from, they, they put an offer to purchase it, they rented it to them for this business back last fall, their financing fell through, and that's the only reason I'm involved in this at all, is because we went ahead and used, financed it for them to be able to do their business through realty and stuff. They, they told us that that would be able to be done. We found out now, as far as this fall, that that is not, not possible. Right off the bat, on the, on the variances or whatever, we're, we're, we're finding to do away with all outdoor storage altogether. It seems like a few of our, our neighbors in comment... It seems like a few of our, our neighbors in comments that we've seen feel that they don't, they don't like seeing that, that a truck setting out in the neighborhood there and stuff. We didn't know that he needed, as far as that they needed to be on our, on the prop, prop, as owners of the property. And so we'll add them to the deed until they're able to get it financed in their name. So that way it would get rid of two of those variances. So really variance-wise, we're just asking to be able to use that whole ship, for him to be able to use that whole shop so that he can have two vehicles that he's working on while he's waiting on cards. We've got a bunch of other people that are in favor of the request that we've got to turn in. I didn't know.
So Tracy, if you, if you or your son-in-law sat down with city staff, is there, and I'm not saying, this will determine how the wind blows here on this one, but is there a reason why you didn't wait to file this case until you could have put the property in their name so that they would be the true home occupant?
Because we didn't know about that, for one. As far as, we didn't, we didn't know that for the home oc, for the home occupation that it had to be in their name. We sat down with, with pre-planning.
Sure, sure.
A month ago, whatever. And if they mentioned it, I, we didn't catch it to know that. Or his name already would have been on the.
So they just basically said semi-repair isn't allowed, but they didn't get into the discussion then on home occupation? I'm surprised by that.
No, they said to pursue the home occupation.
Right, yeah. Okay, it'd just be a better bet to have put it in their name before they got in front of us potentially. Because then they're the home occupant and they're the applicant.
We didn't see that until this got mailed out to us like two days ago.
All right. Okay, anything else that you want to say, Tracy? This is your time, this is your 10 minutes, no one else's. So is there anything else you want to add?
Nothing that I can, I can think of as far as.
Would you be willing to take some questions from the board members?
You may.
Okay.
So you've owned this property for how long? Is it just a recent purchase that you have been doing this business there?
He's been doing the business there since, since like September of last year.
So it's fairly recent, okay.
We, we bought it in January of this year, or December 31st.
Okay.
Of, of 18.
And what was being, was that a single-family home before? Was there a home business there before?
They had some type of a home business at that time. The, prior to that, it was a crane company.
And did they say anything when you bought it about home business or anything?
They told us there was, would be no problem for him to run his business there is what, and that's the reason they had pursued it at the time. But then when we met with the zoning people here two months ago, whatever, they're like, the realtors and stuff didn't do any of the normal clearing. And so it really caught us off guard.
Okay. Tracy, staff is recommending denial of this. If we were inclined to go with the staff recommendation and in accordance with the ordinance, deny this, then the operation would have to cease. This board doesn't have the ability to like grant a stay of like 30 or 60 days. But in the past, sometimes the board has said, well, we'll give a limited special permit that would expire like in two years or a year or 18 months to encourage somebody to kind of phase things out or move to a different location. And I'm not saying that that is what myself or my colleagues would be inclined to consider. But, you know, sometimes it's important to have some options in your back pocket. If this board was inclined to say, no, we really don't want to see this here permanently, but we gave them, let's say, 12 months to get the business transitioned and relocated, would that be something that might be amenable?
It would be as far as, because that's, that's their sole income. Then we give them a chance to try to find some place to.
And were they operating this business somewhere else before they came to this location?
They were renting a facility or whatever, and they wanted to be at a place where he is able to work and still be available to help with, with family.
Sure, okay.
And so they thought they'd finally found their.
Sure, got you. Yeah, and as good as some realtors are, yeah, I, we have a realtor. I always say, and for those in the audience, check with the city and the locality in question, not with your realtor on what's allowable for building codes and zoning codes. Because, you know, a realtor's business is to sell a place, not explain the city zoning ordinance. So just kind of keep that in mind. So it's a hard way to learn, yeah. Okay, any other questions for Tracy? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so how this works now, if anybody wants to speak in support of the applicant, they can have up to five minutes. If you guys want to speak in support of yourselves, you can.
My name's Luke Judd, I own the business. I just want to say that I've worked really hard to get to this point in my life. And if I lose this, I'm going to lose the house. So I, I really don't understand what the hardship, how to get that or, or the definite, your guys' definition of it. But it's going to be substantial hardship to me. And I guess that's, that's all I got.
Well, well put. Brandy, you want to add anything?
Well, I, I understand the concerns of the, the community or whatever, the, the five or six people that complained. But the one that's directly across the street from us, how did we crack their porch? There's so much traffic going on that road. There's nothing we can do about that. The mailbox, if, if somebody got hit, a mailbox, our mailbox comes first. So that mailbox did not have nothing to do with us. There's no way her 90-year-old cracked step could have come from our traffic. There's several, obviously, that cars. The other lady that said she's concerned about her children being outside, well, she lives on the other street on 46th. There's no sidewalk on Broadway. I would never have my kids playing on Broadway Avenue or Hubble, which is where she's at. So I just don't understand how us living around the corner from her is, you know, and it kind of hurts my feelings that she had put those in her comments because I've been giving her stuff from my garden. And she complained about some weeds growing over her fence, which was the asparagus that I actually kept up for her and gave her asparagus and tomatoes. I didn't plant those. I don't eat it. You know, it's just, we offered her shelter for her, you know, she doesn't have a basement for her and her family to go in for tornadoes. It just kind of hurts your feelings a little bit that if they had a concern like that, they could have, you know, come up to us. But I understand, you know, we were misled by the realtor and the previous owners. Obviously, they wanted to get us in there very fastly so we could get in and move our whole family from Norwalk, where my kids have been for 15 years. I had to remove my son, you know, from his school and put, and, and put him into the Southeast Polk District, which is a huge district compared to the Norwalk. He lived with my parents. My parents are nice enough to help us buy this house and to take my son in because he didn't want to graduate from, from Southeast Polk when he's a senior. But he decided to go ahead and move in and help with the business. So he's there now, lost his welding scholarship he had from Norwalk to go in, put this plunge in for us. And, and now he's there and here we all are. I homeschool my daughter who has special needs, so I don't have an income. I have no way to help. And if we don't have this business, we have no way to pay the bills at all. You know, and I understand the offer of the 12 months that would help us get something figured out. But still, I really, you know, this was our, his dream and our dream. And, you know, we went in it full-fledged and, and I just don't, I think that as far as the complaints they have, if there's anything we can do to help with that, to keep our business, you know, even if we cut down our income and just have a couple trucks at a time, you know, keep them in the shop or whatever, we will do whatever we can. We just ask for please not to be, you know, thrown out in the streets with no job and no home. And we have six kids to take care of. No, that's all.
I have a question for Judge, if you can, Judge, if you can come back up. I happen to have a son who is a diesel mechanic. I know a lot of work is done at night because they're using the trucks during the day. But since this is a residential area and impact guns and stuff do make a lot of noise, are you able to maybe limit your hours so you're not working past eight or nine o'clock at night?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm whatever, whatever it takes. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I really don't hear much noise. I do have five kids, but I'm in the house and I really don't hear a whole lot of noise. I honestly don't. And our neighbor that's right next to us, we went over and spoke with her, and she says she doesn't hear any noise either. And they're home during the day and, you know, sometimes at night.
Some people are more sensitive than others, so.
True, true. But as far as the loud equipment, there's really not a whole lot of, you know, constant, consistent noise, you know.
I understand.
Okay, Pat. Okay, anybody else here to, let's see, speak in support of the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? And I think everybody sees how this works. We just need your name, address. You've got up to five minutes.
Hey, my name's Jerry Ward, and I live at 4585 East 46th. I'm opposed to this. They are a neighbor. We get lots of smells, especially in the summertime. You can smell the oil, the diesel fuel, and it's very loud over there. There's lots of impact tools running and there's lots of ribbing of motors. And it is constant for a half hour at a time. And it's not just me, the neighbors are opposed to this too. And when they say the neighbors don't hear it, the neighbors do hear it because I've talked to them. And they do not maintain the property at all. We're talking mowing the yard, trimming the bushes, the junk.
Can you point to where your property is located on that map? Okay, all right, got you. Okay, all right. Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Come on up.
My name is Marilyn Creamy. I live at 4653 East 46th Street. And I did not intend to speak since I had written a letter, but I, I feel compelled to do so. And believe me, I, I sympathize with those whose lives would be disrupted by, if they don't get their request honored. On the other hand, we have lived in the neighborhood for some time and we realize that changes are taking place with the growth in Altoona, the city of Des Moines having annexed this prop, or this area in which we live. But this business is so out of character with the neighborhood. And I think it reflects badly on a residential area. And I think it calls into question Des Moines zoning. We also have an issue with traffic. I hope that after all the construction on Hubble is completed, maybe some of the traffic which we see on Broadway will go back to Hubble. But in any case, there have been several accidents at East 46th Street and Broadway, which is just two houses to the west of this property. And the thought of having these large trucks maneuver into a narrow space that was designed for residential use is, is just, you know, beyond my comprehension. And so I see that as a real safety issue. I also see that we live in an area where there are homes like ours that were built in 1939. But we have homes that have been recently built. And we have homes that have been sold to property owners who would have no idea of what they might be getting into with the thought of having a, a business like this. Also, I hear that single-family residences are going to be built between Hubble and, and Broadway. There's, there's a lot of land there. And I, I think the city of Des Moines owes it to us to see that we make this area attractive. All the growth is going east into Altoona. Let's have a nice residential oasis in that area west of northeast 46th, um, street, East 46th Street. So those, those are my concerns. But I, I just can't imagine businesses like this being allowed in an area like ours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down, Marilyn. Anybody else here to speak in opposition?
I'm the other half of, of the family.
And you let your other half go first?
Always, always.
Good choice.
No, what I wanted, and I, I do sympathize with the problem, but it points out, I think anyone that observes the area realizes how inappropriate this is to the area. We've had so many people speak of it. Our home, we've actually lived there since 1964, the Creamy family. We're only the third owners. The man that built it built Firestone Tire and Rubber Company. It's always been a landmark. And not to, in an attempt to, shall we say, boast about it. But I have gone to the expense of spending thousands of dollars a year just to preserve the trees. Our, our yard, six and a half acres of garden, was laid out by Herd Gardens, which was the premier garden at the time. I have the blueprints. I have preserved it. I spent huge amounts to preserve the trees. Our Arbor says they're the finest trees in Des Moines. And we have tried to preserve this property for the next generation. And there are many people in this neighborhood and, and homes in the last 10, 15 years, some very nice homes have been built on Broadway going west. And I feel for all of the people in our area, the, the need to respect what is probably their greatest investment in life. And, and this is such an eyesore and so inappropriate in the neighborhood. And, and there is sounds and these diesel trucks stopping and the traffic all the time. We're all have become very much aware of it. So I, I do feel that many of us have felt that this is an area that is, some years ago, an individual from the city of Des Moines came out. And when she walked, was in our home and went through the property, she said, this is a jewel that needs to be preserved in the community. And I think many people feel that in our area, and we're trying to preserve this. But this is a total misplacement. And I can see it several miles north in Norwoodville and going west, truck repairs, but nothing like this. And the area, it's in the block, it's in, there are no other businesses. And just in the last year or two, there have been people that have bought some very nice homes and are terribly disappointed to, to see that this is sandwiched in in an area that is totally residential.
All right. Yes, yeah. I'm assuming you're Mr. Creamy, but can we have your full name and address?
Lowell Creamy, 4653 East 46th Street.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down today. Anybody else here to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? All right, seeing none, do we have any further questions for city staff? And then we'll go back to the applicants. Anybody got any questions for staff? Okay, all right. Applicant, you can have up to three minutes for any kind of closing comments. If you guys want to share that time, you're welcome to do that, however you'd like to approach it. Representative of the applicant, that's fine.
I'd just like to state that the street that we do live on, Broadway Avenue, is a busy road. It's been like that for as long as that road's been there before I came. There's trucks running up and down the area. That's just the world we live in. If it was truly a quiet residential street, it would be, you know, something 25 miles an hour. It's a 45 mile an hour road. And it's, it's not quiet regardless of me. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
All right. Okay, all right, we'll close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. Anyone have any initial thoughts?
There is an overwhelming dissatisfaction with the area.
There is an overwhelming dissatisfaction with the area with this being there. And I think we owe a certain responsibility to that, especially since it's going to be, the new zoning is going to be for neighborhood, not A1. I do want to make a point, for 30 years in real estate, any purchase agreement written when you want to do something different, rather than a single-family home, write it in the purchase agreement that it be contingent on your acceptance by somebody in the city or somebody verifying that it is okay. It'll save a lot of heartache. But I just, I know what diesel repair is like. My son does it and I just don't see it fitting in a single-family neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I might be willing to give him time to move out because you need time to move out anyway, but I don't think it belongs there.
Any other thoughts?
I agree.
My only concern is that there was a crane business there before. It's kind of, you know, historically had other businesses there before. It has a large outbuilding. I'm not sure how long that's been there. I do have some concerns with the business itself and the location of it. So, I mean, if we were so inclined not to approve this or to go with staff recommendation, then I'd like to see us, you know, offer up quite a substantial timeframe to give them an opportunity to relocate or whatever they're going to need to do, because that's going to take a lot more time than I'd say a year.
How long do you think it would take?
I don't know. I'm thinking a couple of years. I mean, that would just be a major upheaval, a lot of time in terms of trying to figure out where to go to and you have to relocate your life, your business, your life, your family. You know, it's not just a business you're relocating, so you kind of have to take that into consideration. I'm just thinking there's been business, a business there before. There was a crane operator there before. Not saying that that's good or bad, but it's kind of the history.
I'd be concerned that two years is too long.
I think it is. I think we need to put a little fiber underneath them. It's a lot, it's going to be a lot of work. It's going to be hard. But I'm going to make a motion. I know it's going to be hard and I feel for them. Like I said, I know the work. My son's been doing it for 20 years. Hard to believe I have a child that old. That we not approve the special permit or the variances, but we do allow him one year to either move the residence or move the business or sell the property and move to another place that can fit both the things they need. And I'll split by December 31st, 2020.
Okay. So we might have to do a little mental flaws here on this because you would actually be looking to approve a temporary variance.
Okay.
Is that correct, Judy?
Yes.
Yeah. So you'd be looking to approve a temporary variance of, what was the length of time?
I'd say by the end of next year, December 31st, 2020.
Okay. So basically, yeah, 12 months from effective date of the decision and order to allow them to continue to operate, correct?
They can continue to operate, but they need to be actively looking to move someplace else. I mean, that's a, that's a.
And I'm not sure how we would enforce that, but at the end of that temporary variance, then it's done, would be how the variance would work. So it'd be up to them, you know, probably like tomorrow, start checking around, you know, if this would carry the day. Would you want further limitations though, even in the coming year, on maybe no outside storage of parts or salvage vehicle parts?
I think they had in here like some, no outside storage and business too, they said hours of operation, 7:30 to 9:00. I guess that's okay, 7:00 in the morning, 7:30 in the morning to 9:00 at night. I'd prefer 8:00 at night.
Wow.
Okay. 7:30 in the morning to 8:00 at night. And you can't have no outside storage, but it should be screened from the public or behind the fence or something not obvious. That's vague though.
Can we give them a timeline on the outside storage?
Well.
Get rid of what's out there.
I would probably think that that would need to be pretty quick.
Yeah. But I mean, that's at 60 days.
I mean, if there's a truck pulled in to be serviced, that could stay outside. But what we don't want is, you know, air foils and sleeper cabs and truck rims sitting around outside.
And I'm not, I don't want to amend your motion just yet, but I'm just saying if there was, if we said you can have 60 days to get rid of all this stuff outside.
It may not be staff's direction of what they're looking for, but at the same time.
But we're trying to find a win-win here.
Yeah. Yeah. If we put that in there, would that be something you could work with? Okay.
I'm just saying if we can get to the point where they're going to be gone.
Yeah.
Let's try and give them a soft landing here.
Right. And related to that is a good segue back to you, Lynn. I would have a concern that we want them to put in screening if we want them to be done within a year.
Okay. Okay. No screening.
So I don't want them to put in a bunch of planning.
Well, because that was the also, the other thing is if we give 60 days to get rid of the outside storage, then that's effectively the same thing, is reducing the stress on the neighborhood and the commercial feel. So we, outside storage to be removed 60 days and probably from the date of the order. And then have them moved out of the business. They can live in their single-family, but have the business out of there by December 31st, 2020. Hours of 7:30 in the morning to 8:00 at night. Anything else?
That's good work. But yeah, so we've got a motion and I think Lynn's made that clear. Would there be a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's four, five, six.
No.
No. All those opposed, that's one. Okay. So trying to work the balance here. We keep the intent of the zoning ordinance intact. This, as was mentioned, this is a changing area. We'd like to be as fair as we can to you all. If you have a growing business, you're going to want to get bigger than this place eventually anyway. So I hope your business is successful and can expand elsewhere, but you've got up to a year to keep it going, but to get that figured out. Okay? All right. We wish everybody the best and you've got a jewel of a place and a good neighborhood up there, so keep it up. All right. We appreciate everybody coming down on this issue today and commenting. Thank you. Okay. That will then, 14, 15, and 16 went to consent and were approved. So that'll bring us to item number 17, a special permit request at 2560 Southeast 14th Street.
And I'm going to show you the consent map right away that we didn't get any type of response.
Mm-hmm.
It's actually a little surprising. The subject property is actually a fairly large property tucked back in off of East 14th Street, which runs along the east side. There's a drive access coming in off of East 14th Street. There's also an access that punches through to the south on King Avenue. You may, if you know the southeast 14th corridor, this is a mini golf business and I believe this is just a house at that location there along East 14th Street. The subject property has a large building. I believe it was some type of, originally some type of assembly for like a fraternal organization or possibly even like a dance hall at one time. Not sure of the particular history of it, but it was built as an assembly-type building. It didn't, it hasn't had paved parking. If it did have paved parking, it hasn't been maintained in a fashion. And then gravel has been used to maintain the surfaces over time. You'll see in these photos, this is coming down, going north on the drive access to King Avenue. So you're looking north in towards the site as you're coming off the public street there. Then you sort of, this is looking back at that entrance from in front of the hall, which is a, serving as a religious assembly temple at this point. Kind of panning a little bit further west, you see there's significant changing grade with the residences to the south. So it, you know, this was carved into here a little bit back in the day when it was built. I'm going to show you this first. So this is looking at the building, which is got kind of the Quonset-type roof structure, very typical of small assembly buildings back in, prior to the 1950s. There's also a house on the property that goes with the overall property, so there is a residence that's associated with it. You can get a sense of the drive access going out to East 14th here. A little bit in the foreground, you can kind of see this surface here. I think what you get is grass growing up through gravel over time. You can see it a little bit more here. My sense from that is that that's a surface that gets used infrequently for parking, probably not on a regular basis, but when there's large events or large groups of parking for certain events or assemble, you know, services, ceremonies, that that gets used. But in most cases, my sense is that the usage is fairly limited to what's up by the building and what, in this area, which you can see there's sort of some broken up asphalt. And then also to the south of the building in this area, which I, for some reason, I didn't get a great photo of that. This might show a little bit here. Again, I think broken up paving. Because it's an institution of religious character, this can be looked at through the scope of a special permit in terms of all of the components of it. They did come to the board in the past just for their farmer's market activity. At that time, they actually had an approved site plan for paving this parking, so it's just never been implemented over time. So that expired over time. So in 2013, they did come in with that farmer's market. That's also expired because that was only for a five-year period. I don't, you'll have to ask the appellants if they still even operate a farmer's market, but they would probably have to come back in and ask for that separately if that was something that they still wanted to do. Staff is looking at this. They have a phased approach and I'm going to show you that as well. I'm going to have to stretch out the big map here. So the initial phase takes the driveway, comes in and would pave parking lot, parking spaces to the south. Believe that's their immediate intent. The other phases, they would still want available, but they would be looking to construct those in a later time. I think probably their constraint is the funding of the situation. So this being the last piece, this larger, which also gives me the sense that that's the part that's least frequently used at this point in time. So this would come in as a site plan and they would, as long as they were showing the phasing, they could, that site plan would not expire as long as they implemented the initial phase within 270 days. The site plan would stay intact. Staff has looked at this over time. This is a special permit, so we aren't technically applying the variance test. However, there's a separate component for temporary paving in the special permitting section that speaks to an 18-month timeframe for other uses that aren't these institutions of regional, institutional, institutions of religious character. But as a baseline, staff wanted to look at that as a sort of a timing for what would be appropriate in the phasing. So we're recommending approval of this special permit, but we do want it to be compliant with the site plan, which they're demonstrating that they're capable of providing, that they would complete Phase 1 within six months of this decision in order. That would give them time, a reasonable amount of time to finish that first phase of parking lot there on the south. That the areas identified as Phase 2 and 3 would then have 18 months. And again, this is sort of in the same line of thinking as we would have for other uses of granting them a temporary waiver of paving through special permit process. Any use then would also be surfaced then with a dustless material if they're going to use it for parking. And I want to kind of qualify 3 and 4 are based on the use of it for parking. They can at any time restore it to a turfed condition and not use it as parking and it wouldn't, you know, this wouldn't really be relevant. But if they're going to use it for parking, then Phases 2 and 3 need to be surfaced with this dustless material in interim and then permanently paved within 18 months based on the staff recommendation. And then the last piece is really a catch-all provision. If for whatever reason the activity going on here starts exhibiting a nuisance, which parking starts occurring in ways that impact the neighbors that surround it, I don't envision that, but this allows that to be brought back to the board, so. Are there any questions?
How did this come to you?
I don't know if this was an enforcement action or just something that they came to us.
Yeah, Cindy's got a good question because, you know, I can't say that I've visited there directly, but it was my impression there already was a place of either spiritual or religious retreat or a place of worship there for many years. They even asked to have a sign at one time that we approved. So had that use discontinued?
I'm not, it's not clear because I don't know if the original applicant that did the previous site plan is the same entity.
Okay.
I don't know if the same individuals are involved and they're just now getting some resources to be able to start implementing these steps.
As if the old approvals kind of expired, they really need to get renewed.
Yeah.
And start having a plan.
So we had, there was a pre-app meeting on this and so I just didn't know if it was stimulated by enforcement or if they came to us of their own.
So, and if somebody, you know, just for my own background and reference, if we had a residential neighborhood and somebody wanted to build a, let's say, a new synagogue or Catholic church or something, they'd have to come in for a special permit. Is that right?
They would come in, if they didn't have, if they were in a residential zoning and they wanted to vary from the terms of the standard zoning conditions, they would need to do it through a special permit, yes.
So, and to kind of, again, try to show comparison here, so this is no different because normally this institutional, institution of religious or spiritual character, what, isn't allowed in this kind of district?
It would be allowed as a use.
Right.
But they would have to conform to district standards.
And that's where this comes into play then?
Yeah. So this is the, this is a mechanism for them to get the relief of the standard requirements for that district. And they're offered that through the current ordinance by virtue of being an institution of either educational or religious or philanthropic or eliamosinary characters.
Good. I got you. Yeah. And I can't pronounce that word that you just said, eliam.
It's in there. Trust me. It's right there in your little code section.
Yeah. Yeah. I read it. I think I know what it means.
I have another question, Mr. Chan.
Yes. Go ahead, Cindy.
What would happen then if Phase 2 and Phase 3, if for whatever reason they weren't able to complete the concrete work or the work that we're requiring?
Yeah. That could be permanent asphalt or permanent Portland cement concrete.
Okay. So what happens if it doesn't happen?
So I think they would have to come back and ask for additional time on that relief or they would have to restore it so that it's not used for off-street parking.
And this, you would be monitoring that? Sue Ann would be monitoring that? I'm assuming.
I think there is a systematic follow-up on site plan, after a site plan's approved and then there's improvements made that we come in and inspect to see that it's done in accordance with the site plans.
Okay. Anything else for Eric? Okay. And you showed the vicinity map.
Yeah. So there was no response.
Right. Okay. So I don't remember it.
Which I actually think is surprising, but I know. Which I actually think is surprising, but I know all of our notices went out. We got notices on other cases.
Sure, sure. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant. Thanks for your patience in waiting today.
Get out of your way, David.
David Churchill, my address is 2701 Kirkwood Street, Milo. I came by this by having conversation with the engineer that did the original plan. And with meeting with the owners, they have a more aggressive board. They have a new agenda to bring it into compliance. And in order to do that, because they're a nonprofit, there's obviously some funding challenges, if you will. So the suggestion is if we phase it, which is out for bid for the whole thing and we don't have a number yet, that we can at least be, show our intent to come into compliance.
Spirit and intent of the ordinance, right?
Yeah, and obviously now we're going to be a little bit more under the eyeglass because we've identified that we're going to do something. In meeting with the board yesterday, they are happy with the five recommendations. The number three is the one that they stumble on a little bit, which is the 18 months to complete, complete phase two and three. With conversations with the contractors, we're also discussing, should phase three come before phase two? If we put in the drives, the heavy equipment comes in on both the drives to do the parking lot, so wouldn't it be better to do the parking lot first and do the drive out to 14th Street Third? Anyway, I got my numbers mixed up. So down to the point, if we can modify the staff recommendation to 36 months for phase two and phase three, that would be great. Understanding the will of the board and knowing how things work, we'd be really happy with 24 months, which is the kind of standard. We don't kind of fit into a standard, but usually we get 24 months to complete from the date of the, of the order.
So you'd say, so 24 months from today for everything?
Correct.
But still meeting phase one within six months?
Phase one with six months is not the problem. It's, it's one, trying to find out what the amount is. Do they have to go out and get donations for a million dollars or for $700,000?
Right.
And that's where we're at now.
But then phase two and three within 24 months of the decision in order?
Correct, and that runs concurrently with the six months.
Sure. Okay. All right. That would be our request.
It's six and eight.
It's an interesting group.
No, within 18 months.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm just curious, Dave and Eric touched on it, you know, this was probably built at a time when the Des Moines city limits didn't extend that far south as a lot of southeast 14th is. But do you know what this was back in the day?
I don't. It was, it was.
Like a dance hall, Eric Todd.
Some part of a religious function.
Okay.
It fell into really bad disrepair with a horrible reputation.
Okay.
They've turned that around.
Yeah.
They've got a couple of permits to redo the mechanical systems, they're building permits for some structural stuff. So I'm kind of trying to help them along to get them back into good graces and they seem to want to do that. Obviously, the stumbling block is funding.
Right, okay.
So if they have any questions?
I have a question. Looking for 24 months for finishing, how long are the bids good for? Because I'm afraid that if we give you too much time, it's going to become too expensive.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
When your contractors give you bids, are they good for 24 months or what's the timeframe? Because, you know, every January 1st prices go up for construction.
The bid, the bid amount is a target goal. So they have, they have the ability to do the phase one now, but they need to also have their funding program in place for a number. So if we have the amount of time to do it, then they can collect the money in order to do it. I don't know how long the bids are good for, maybe.
Sure.
If we get a bid now, it's probably going to be good till May 1st.
Okay.
Because they're going to start construction May 2nd.
Sure.
Do you think they can make provisions for that when they're, in their funding to raise enough that they have that overreach if they need it?
I'm trying to school them in that process.
Okay.
They seem to be good at raising money.
Okay.
When it comes down to it. I know that the, we also have to do a funding for a sewer connection. They did do a water connection and brought that in and we all know the Des Moines Water Department's expensive to hook onto.
Yep.
So they, they're definitely in that process of trying to move it forward correctly. Asking for permission, not forgiveness.
So if we were to work off of a calendar, you'd be, if we were to work off of a calendar for these dates, phase one, you'd be comfortable with the last date of June of 20?
Correct.
And then 12/31 of 21 is 18 months from that?
Correct.
For completion of two and three?
Correct.
In between, you're going to put the dustless surface down?
I'm not sure what they're going to, I think they're going to do nothing on the area that has not been maintained. And like Eric said, basically, they have planned events periodically, but most of the time that I've been there, I've never seen more than eight cars. But they do have events that come in and they would park on that. We can put a dustless surface down or we can stipulate that they have to park on the new parking.
Staff's not asking for that though, I don't think.
Item four, which you said your board was okay with other than the date, says that you have to put the dustless surface down. The areas of phase two and three.
Then we'll do that. I'm sorry. It's, do you want the dustless surface on the entire phase three?
And I kind of qualified that in the staff report. It needs to be where there's parking in turn.
Yeah, yeah.
So those areas that aren't being parked, that should be restored anyway for the interim and the dustless surface needs to go where there's parking.
Because right now it says where areas phase two and three are. You don't say where parking is or isn't.
Right.
Because that is parking, whether there's.
Well, they're showing it on their, that was in their application.
So we just need to clarify that a little bit more.
And they could come in with a site plan and.
Yeah. If you rope off your own internal parking and restore some temporary turf without a big investment, that would probably meet the intent of the city.
That would work.
But yeah, but if you wanted to park on every square inch until then, you're going to have to put in temporary millings and dustless surface.
I could certainly come up with a, with a document that staff can review and say.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Other questions? Anything else we can ask Dave?
No, I'm good.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none, anybody to speak in opposition to the applicant?
I'm speaking in opposition.
Sure.
Since I was out there, I do want to get on the record. So the items three and four are, while they don't say it, they're, they're relative to areas that are actually going to be parked. They always, as they, without coming to the board, can restore those areas that they aren't using for parking.
Sure.
And they could have a less, a lesser site plan that scaled back those phases.
This gives them the framework and they can either fill the canvas or make it smaller?
Yes, so I didn't, yeah, they're not having to do phases two and three if they're not, if they don't end up using those for parking. If they're parking on them, we want a dustless surface.
Okay. Clear enough, Dave? You okay?
Yeah, they could restore it back to grass and park it.
Right, exactly.
Iowa State does it every Saturday, so I guess we just got to decide.
And they, and they don't let anyone park on it either.
The rest of the time.
When it rains.
It's too muddy, yeah.
Right. Even if you have a permit.
All right, any other questions for staff while Eric's up here? Okay, seeing none.
Thanks, sir.
Since there was no opposition, we'll go ahead and close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. It would seem to me that it's pretty clear here that the applicant's okay with doing phase one within generally six months of the decision in order. So I don't know that we would need to maybe worry about a direct date, calendar. But he'd like to have 24 months from the date of the decision in order to do phase two and three, to whatever degree that's determined in their final site plan. As the southeast side rep, it's a nice quiet place. I never see any illegal dumping there. It looks like they're generally taking care of the entrances and exits. That's very innocuous, so if it's a place to either meditate, worship, or take a break from what goes on in the daily grind, it looks like it works good for that. So if they're improving it, great. So I'd make a motion to approve. Yes, sir?
I, Dave had not talked to me since you were.
Sure.
About the vegetable stand.
Okay. I'd have to have you come back to the mic here if you want to add anything further.
And I can ask, I can speak to that too.
Okay.
They've not spoken to me about having a vegetable stand. I've never talked to them about it and I've never seen one, so.
Yeah.
And we talked about everything about the site yesterday. They didn't bring it up, so my assumption is if they want to do it, they've got to go back.
And certain vegetable things, Eric can probably tell us this, certain vegetable things seasonally don't need anything special, but, so Eric, if it was or wasn't on the table, how do vegetable stands work?
Yeah, so that was not on the table. That's expired after that five years.
Sure.
At this point, that would have to be filed separately. There's a one, there's only one more window for that in our new code. That's likely to be an administrative level of review.
So if Grimes Sweet Corn wants to show up somewhere, is that like covered? I mean, somebody like that, is that covered?
There's some exemptions for people that produce their own food to sell.
Okay.
But if there's other, there's not, there's very few farmer's markets that are exclusively that.
Right. So odds are the new ordinance would allow them to work within reason within staff.
They would come in and get a separate permit, but it wouldn't come to the board.
Yeah, okay.
So.
All right, cool.
Under the way the new code's drafted and approved, there's another review process for these special event type things, so.
All right, excellent. But good to bring up, so thanks, Dave. So based on staff recommendation, including analysis situation with that minor amendment to number three to allow up to 24 months, I'd make a motion to approve the requested special permit and conditions therein. Do you have a second?
Sure.
If you've deferred, okay, we'll give it to Dave for the second then. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries 5-0. All right, thank you, Dave. Give our best to your clients and friends, so. All right, Bert, you're up next for, I believe, our last item, a variance request at 1517 East Madison.
Wasn't that 6-0?
Oh, it was 6-0. It was 6-0. Six of us.
That was my count too.
Yes.
All right, item number 18 is a request for two variances that would allow for retention of an, I guess, off-street parking lot and storage area that's within 10 feet of the east, of the front property line along East Madison Avenue. Subject property is located on the south side of East Madison, just to the east of the East 14th corridor. It's in an area that's zoned M1 and contains several industrial uses. The subject property is actually an expansion of the business that is on the property immediately to the west. It's a transmission and auto repair business. They've, in the last few years, have expanded onto this lot that they've owned to the east. The city received a complaint earlier this year that it had been expanded without the required site plan. So when the zoning inspector looked at it, he found this was the aerial view from 2014. You could see this area was gravelled and generally, and then come 2018, it's been completely surfaced with asphalt millings, which I understand it is an improvement over what was there, but when they put the asphalt millings down, they should have came in for a site plan and would have had to comply with landscaping and all those requirements at that time. And I would point out that they've put the asphalt millings right up to the front property line and then they, you can barely see it, they've put a fence around the perimeter. They're proposing to pull the parking area 10 feet back so that it would line up with the existing paved parking lot on their property immediately to the east, I'm sorry, to the west. As I mentioned, they were cited back in August of this year for expanding the use without a site plan. Here are some photos that the applicant submitted. This shows the asphalt millings that are there today on that expansion area. This shows the existing site and then this expansion area, you can see where it goes from paving to the millings. It's another view of the storage area. And this is looking back from the expansion area onto the existing property. Another view of the existing property that shows it is a very clean property and well-maintained. And these are some photos that they submitted. I'll let the applicant explain what these are, but I believe it shows the property immediately to the east. I'll let the applicant explain those. So here are the photos that the staff took earlier this week, looks like maybe as recent as this morning, that show what the site looks like. You can see the vehicles are parked orderly, but again, they have this fence around the perimeter. Their dumpster right now is located here, right off East Madison Avenue, but they are intending to move it further south onto the site.
And screen it.
And screen it, yeah. So here again is that dumpster. And then did I? Had a drawing that showed the layout. Stuck to the back. So again, from here over was the existing parking lot and this is what they're proposing to do. Again, they'd pulled the millings back 10 feet from the front property line along East Madison. The area where that dumpster is located, that concrete pad, they would retain that, but then they would have this driveway through here and then they would relocate the dumpster to this rear portion of the property. Again, this shows a proposed paved aisle, but they are wanting to leave this aisle as the asphalt millings because they feel that if it was main or was paved, that the trucks and the garbage collection equipment would crush the concrete and cause a hardship. So here's the consent map. We just had two cards in support. One card owns both of these parcels here. Staff has recommended denial. We feel that it would be appropriate to maintain both the required setback and to provide the minimum required paving material. We don't feel that they've demonstrated the hardship needed to grant the variances, so we have recommended denial. Again, it's not the, the use is allowed by right, it's just they would have to maintain the setback and the paving. Any questions for me?
So would you have approved the millings if they'd come in?
The, if they were purely a storage area and not necessarily a parking lot, they could do the millings for the actual storage areas. They would have to pave the maneuvering and the drive aisle, but they would potentially be able to have some asphalt millings for the storage areas.
And what do you consider storage, like vehicles waiting for repair? That counts as storage?
Yeah, or like trailers, other equipment.
Because it's a transmission shop, right? So probably the stuff that comes in are vehicles needing repair.
Right.
Does that count as storage or would you say that's general parking?
I might let Sue answer that one.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll wait till the applicant, yeah, he can.
If you, if you left the dumpster where it is and, and they put the proper guarding around it.
It would have to be set back 25 feet.
Yeah.
From the front property line. Since the enclosure would be considered a structure, it would have to meet setback or.
Okay, so he sets it back 25 feet. How far back is it now?
Right now, it's the dumpster.
It abuts the line, the property line.
It's within five feet.
Okay, so he'd have to move it back 20 feet or something.
Yeah.
Then he wouldn't have to pave anything if he did that because there would be no traffic.
Well, no, he'd still have to pave the drive aisle through the storage yard.
It looks to me like he put the drive aisle through there to get to the dumpster, right?
Right.
That's a dead end of the dumpster in that drawing, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So I'm just saying if he moved it back, and I'm not trying to design this for him, I'm just trying to get some clarification. He could move the dumpster back 20 feet or 25 feet from where it is, pave it, and as long as it was shielded correctly, it'd be, he would be within compliance.
Well, he would still need a paved maneuvering aisle through the storage area. If he was using the storage area to store trailers or vehicles, he would still need the paved drive aisle to provide maneuvering within the storage area. I get what you're saying, that he would only have to pave back 25 feet to provide the paved access to the dumpster, but he would still have to provide some sort of.
So you're saying he needs a driveway internally there to drive on, park the cars in the storage area?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Bert, the rather tall chain link fence that goes right up to the property line, would that have, even in an M1?
See, in M1, it can be up to eight feet tall along the front property line since it's not solid.
Okay, so then that wouldn't really need to change?
No.
Okay, and what about any like landscaping requirements in the M1?
Yeah, he would have. Yeah, he would have to provide landscaping.
So how can he do that, it'd be behind the fence then, wouldn't it?
Under the current placement of the fence, it would have to be within the fence, but our landscaping standards would allow that. It doesn't require the landscaping to be on the outside of the fence, it just requires, I mean, it's preferred, right?
So if we have like green ivy outfield fence, like, he could do that, he could landscape in the fence?
He possibly could, he would still need to do or provide some shrubs and ornamental trees and maybe even some over storage trees to meet landscaping requirements.
Okay, regardless of what's here today on the agenda.
Hey Bert, can you move your, that drawing to, what, what kind of landscaping do the neighbors have? Show the, there you go.
Doesn't look like much, there are single-family houses directly across.
Right.
I'm talking about on his same side of the street. The guy just to the, to be the right as I'm looking at the photo.
Yeah, that other undeveloped lot.
He doesn't have, other than along the street, he's the same way, right?
Right now they are, yeah, they're.
And I know he's not part of our topic, but I'm just looking at what the, what are the neighbors doing?
But ironically, on their main property, it looks like they have nice paving and a curb and maintain the proper setback with at least a green space.
Right.
Right.
Has this historically, at least in the last four years, been in the city limits, this stretch at East Madison?
Yeah, it's been in for a long time.
Okay, so the current paving on the main lot with the main business probably followed guidelines and city requirements at the time that was paved?
Yeah, it was to meet current paving setback requirements. It might not be, meet our landscaping requirements, but it meets paving.
Okay, alright. Alright, anything else for Bert? Okay, thank you sir. Alright, applicant, representative of the applicant, thanks for waiting this afternoon.
Hi, my name is Tim Lippert, I'm the owner of General Area Transmissions. I purchased the property off my father back in 2010. He was the owner of the property since 1976. And obviously I have tried to do some things, you know, to make the property more curb appeal, I guess, so to speak. You know, obviously, it's big in business to make sure your property looks good. I try to make sure that everything is squeaky clean within my property. I wish I could say some more about my neighbors doing the same things as well. I do know there's some violations there, but some of the things I believe that I felt I was putting my faith into other businesses that were doing their job by gaining permits.
Okay.
And one of them was the fence company.
Yeah.
That, with that being said, also the guys that did the millings told me that since there was already millings there, it was grandfathered in, and I didn't have to have a permit for that. So I put my faith into them, believing that they were telling me the truth. Unfortunately, now I find out that it's not. Obviously, I'm frustrated with that. I felt that what I was doing with my business was nothing more than making it better for me, and, you know, the whole reason that we bought this property back in 1997 was we were going to expand the business. The business is doing extremely well. Matter of fact, I even actually do work for the city of Des Moines. So, you know, I'm doing a great thing for the city, I'm doing a great thing for Polk County.
They're hard on transmissions.
Yes, they are.
Especially those police.
I got one in the shop right now, so. And anyway, you know, I try to do, I think the best thing that I possibly can. And I do know there's violations, the dumpsters within violation. I know the fence now was, was not in violation. I do know the concrete slab in the sidewalk was. Okay, I know that was done correctly. And I'm kind of a victim of a scrupulous to individuals, and I feel bad about that because that's not how I run business. Anybody knows our reputation, knows what we do, and I try to uphold that. Now, some of the things that had brought me here today was there was some individuals that thought that my property was causing the water damage to their property. And I wanted Bert to take some pictures, or these are over here. One of the pictures in which I want to show here.
Take your time, you've waited patiently.
We don't bite.
Hopefully I'm doing this right. One of the pictures here I wanted to show everybody, it's kind of backwards from what you're doing, isn't it? If you look at this picture, the, the building over on the right over here is Crawford Trucking. If you take a look real close, I know the pictures don't do it great because it was from a cell phone, this is in a driving down rainstorm, okay, it was early in the morning when I took this picture. And if you look at the downspouts on here, if you look at this particular downspout right there, it's not even hooked up. If you look at the tubing that he actually has, where it runs, you can see the water back up over here. And this, you know, through gravitational pull, I can't change that. The way water runs, it runs back toward his building back over here, and as you can see where he's putting his, his, his sandbags over here. The water is all running back, and he's actually, maybe a little bit of his own cause here, okay?
So where's your property in relation to this photo?
When I'm taking this picture, I'm looking, my property's back over to the east.
Okay, okay.
Yes, if we were looking at this, I would be right here taking this picture, right now.
So, so you're looking between two of his own or someone else's buildings, and not yours?
The green building here, you're looking at is owned by Robert Creamy, and then this property back over here is owned by Bob Snyder, Snyder Custom Auto.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And now, when I took some of these pictures, and the reason I wanted to show this, because I don't, I, I, I thought that if three business owners could have got together and decided, you know, let's try to figure this out, okay? It's not just my fault, okay? I'll take blame that I'm a violator, I will take that blame, but I don't believe this is all my fault. So I took this picture in a driving down rainstorm, you can clearly see, and this is on Madison Avenue, and I'm looking back south toward Fleming, and the building in the back is Crawford Trucking. You can see the water, this is all dirt, by the way. So the water's running down toward the south, from north to south. And this is just another picture that shows you a little bit more that it is the same way. And so, what I wanted to do, this is actually when I was, we're, we're early in the, in the morning, and the water, you can see the water here just trickles down that way. But one of the things I wanted everybody to see too, if you look at this picture here, this is Snyder Custom Auto. He's got downspouts right here that are gushing out water, and there's also, you know, a drainage tile system going clear to the back, back here, and this is all puddled up back here where all these tubes are coming out. So this water is, you know, forcing its way from east to west at this point in time. So, you know, with, with some of the stuff that, if you look at my property, and I, I, I think that clearly showing that some of these pictures here that I had Bert show is the, the millings absorb the water very well. They, they, they do a very good job. This is, when, when I took some of these other pictures of this that are on here, this is when it's pouring down rain, and it's absorbing that water very well. And my property actually sits up higher over there back in the corner than the adjacent property to the east of me, which is that green building. And it sits up probably five or six inches higher now. And that water runs between that green building and my property. And that's where I showed this picture here, that clearly shows it right there, that this is all coming, you know, back from here and down here. Now, there was a couple other pictures here that I didn't get, Bert, I apologize for that, I actually have them on my phone, but. The thing is, you know, I'm willing to do what I need to do as far as, you know, correcting the dumpster. You know, with this, you know, I proposed basically, you know, putting a basic curb over here on the backside to try to, you know, retain the water from going over top of it, and I don't believe it's doing that anyway, but that's what I proposed. The proposed paved aisle that they're requiring of me, as I, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the business that I have is booming, I'm, I'm growing, I'm trying to get bigger and bigger. The purpose of that property was I'm trying to build onto it, that's what that property was acquired for. It wasn't for storage, what we use it for now. Now currently, the parking is over here, where you see in the pictures on the overhead, the paved. That's where we park the cars, when they're finished, we put them over in storage, I like to call it the bullpen. And the reason I put the fence up is because there's a high crime rate, crime rate of people stealing catalytic converters. Obviously, you probably know and have heard of that. So I try to protect the cars and vehicles that I have, put them over in storage until they're picked up. And that's solely right now what that's used for, but the main purpose of what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to build on and add on to the building and make it bigger so I can get more vehicles in, so I can get more tax dollars to the city of Des Moines. So in essence, this is what the property, this is my goal, is not to spend a ton of money on trying to correct this, because I actually have another alternative to the dumpster. I actually have, in the corner of my building, I have, where I put transmissions in, I'm probably one of the few transmission shops in Des Moines that carry 100 transmissions in stock at all times. So I can actually take that dumpster and put it inside there, and then the, the truck can come up and he can, you know, get it, we can get it out early in the morning, I get there early, I'm there, I live there, 7 o'clock in the morning, you know, until whenever I leave. But I can open that up for him, and he can get it dumped, and he can leave, and the dumpster will go back in. If I have to do that, that's what I have to do. But I don't want, my idea is I don't want to spend a ton of money here on this because my proposed business future is to build a building. And then, you know, that will be, all be addressed at that point in time. You know, with the, with the engineering and what have you.
So are you okay with the setbacks they've requested, you just want to eliminate the drive aisle?
Well, if I could, the thing, that, that, my theory would be if I could get the setbacks, the 10-foot setback, if I could get that setback, even with the, the existing, I don't know where the picture is for that.
Because, because that would match your current curb.
Correct.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
If I could get that, and then my building, when I build on there, I'm going to lose that, that space.
Right.
Right.
So then I have to gun up and go back and spend more money on going back the other way.
So that's the first variance.
So, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, you're, you're not against having to deal with the dumpster in, inside where you keep your transmission inventory either, it doesn't sound like.
Oh, not at all, I can do that, that's plan B.
Okay, so, and I'm not trying to make a motion here, and I'm not trying to design this, I'm just trying to understand what you think would be doable, because it sounds like if you add on to your building, you're going to be putting pavement down anyway, so let's not put the pavement down, till the building goes up.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, and, and the, the theory is, you know, even trying to be proactive here with, you know, I can bring them millings in, you know, over on that backside where there's question, and even make it higher and slope it more back, you know, slope this, you know, more back, as I put the, the arrow here, slope it more back this way. I feel it's already high enough, now, I did, when I did this, I put it up high enough, but through settling and through the, a couple, you know, four or five years, it's dropped down a little bit. And I mean, obviously I can't help that, but I could certainly bring in the more millings to change that again.
I just want to say, I live in the area, I drive by there often, I used to have a son who worked at Crawford, no longer does, so I'm very familiar, and your area always does look very, very nice. It's one of the nice ones I notice as I go down that street. So I do want to compliment you on that. You're talking about transition time, how long do you think it is before you might be building onto the building and maybe changing the lot?
The building could come within the next year. Obviously, the money's there, I've had a very good year, I've had, since I bought the business in 2010, it's been nothing but booming. And to be perfectly honest with you, when I seen some of the violations on there, when I seen it said debris and junk cars and this and that, I'm sitting there, and I understand that's just wording. But, you know, I take that personal, because I don't see that in my shop. You can walk in my shop, and I get a lot of people tell me every day what a clean shop I have.
It is, it is.
Yep.
So I, I mean, my personal thoughts are, I, oh, we're not into discussion yet, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Tim? Okay, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Alright, we've got a packed courtroom here, so we'll see, is there anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none, is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Come on up. You've got up to five minutes, we just need your name and address.
My name is Nick Kiley, I work for Crawford Trucking. My name's Nick Kiley, I work for Crawford Trucking.
Okay.
Here at the last, since he's done this in the last, I don't know, two years he's had it done, I suppose, my office keeps flooding because all of the water keeps running off of it into the back corner.
Can you kind of use the larger aerial map again and point to where you're at?
So all the water, where am I at here? All the water, he packed this down with asphalt millings, he ran over with an asphalt packer. So this whole area right here floods, and right here into my office, which I had to spend $800 to have it vacuumed out, right here. All the water from this area, this area, runs right into my office, and it's pretty costly for us at Crawford. So I'm kind of opposed, I want him to do a grade plan to where it raises up the asphalt milling, so it's not. Have you been there, have you seen, well, it's, it's higher in the front and comes right back to my office. And he's about six inches higher than my office on those millings.
So Nick, is your business the one with like the gray roof with the hatch marks through it there?
Yeah, we just put a new gap.
Yeah, so then that entire area where your roof is, that's also impervious, so where does your water go? Where does it drain off to?
In them pipes, it goes down to Bob Snyder, and then it comes back around this building right here.
But you're almost on the lot line yourself, so you're saying that all your water from that roof comes out to the east side and doesn't mess with anything?
It goes out both sides, that goes out the front.
And one goes out to the west?
But all the gutters that we have in the back are tied into a tile that runs all the way down.
Okay, that's kind of what I'm getting at, okay. And then pops out at grade, comes out on the surface?
Right here by these trucks, right here.
Okay, well, it's got to be pretty muddy too, then.
It's, it's, it's a mud hole there, any way you look at it.
Okay, I got you. Okay, alright, any other questions for Nick? Okay, alright, thank you for waiting patiently and coming down today, appreciate it. Okay, any further questions for staff? I do have one, Bert. This variance of the, well, we've got a requirement for a 25-foot front yard setback. What about side and rear yard setbacks? What requirements does M1 have for that?
It's kind of tricky, if it's a parking lot with, it's purely vehicles and vehicle, for parking, it could actually be within five feet of that front property line to the north. When it becomes outdoor storage for longer-term storage of vehicles or for trailers or equipment, then it needs to be the 25 feet from the north. I don't believe there's any, since it's adjoining industrial, I don't believe it needs to be setback.
So with even a liberal interpretation, he couldn't be closer than five feet to those rear side yards with any kind of millings and storage, parking, parking?
Well, no, I'm saying he only has to have a setback from the front property line or from a residential zoning district.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
Since these aren't residentially zoned, there's no setback.
Okay, so he could be right up against the property line, even with paving?
As long as he met landscaping standards and all the site plan requirements.
I'm just trying to find a way, you know, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree that his own water is impacting everybody else, we're not a stormwater board.
Right.
But if we do have paving or compacted materials right up to a property line, I could certainly see there's no room for stormwater onsite to have a chance to infiltrate, you know, potentially before it leaves the property, so, yeah.
Well, it doesn't look like there's a spot for the stormwater to penetrate anywhere around there.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of roof that it's running off of.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
It's not just groundwater, it's coming off roof into.
Does the owner say that doesn't asphalt millings allow the water to penetrate now?
It would better than paving, but under the new ordinance, even with paving, they'd have to have stormwater retention. Yeah, so, so yeah, brings up lots of ins and outs, but basically, it's the front yard setback that's the big deal for you guys, and then the, the hard surface.
Yeah, specifically for the maneuvering.
For the maneuvering, okay, got it.
But you're, you're defining this as storage.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Which the storage, if it's purely storage, it only needs the paved maneuvering drive aisle.
That's nice of you, yeah.
But if it, yeah, and I could say, well, he's just parking cars there because they're done, and I imagine they don't sit there very long if they've been repaired, because he wants the money and the guy wants the deal.
But if it's a parking lot, then it entirely needs to be paved, so, that's why it's a double-edged sword.
So certainly his daily employees should not be parking there at a minimum.
Yeah, well, we, we, yeah, okay, we can figure this out.
We can hash that out. Okay, alright. Okay. All right. Anything else for Bert? Okay. Tim? I don't want to drag this out any longer than you would like to before we get to our decision-making, but since somebody spoke in opposition, you can have to, you can have up to three minutes for a rebuttal if you'd like. You waited patiently, so we'll give that to you.
One of the, excuse me, one of the points that I'd like to bring out would be, again, the picture that they're so adamant about me causing water damage. When you look at this picture, it clearly is proof in the pudding to me. This tube right here that you're seeing right here running behind these sandbags are coming from the end of the building. And that tubing is coming from around, his water is running from that side going back over here.
Dude, he's running all the water to the back.
It's still, it's still stormwater, you know, coming from the roof of the building coming back here. And then this one tube back here is not even hooked up. It's clearly off of there. So I really believe that they're, have, they have their own problem too as well. And that needs to be addressed if it's a big issue. What you have to do is you have to, like I did on one of the end of my building, instead of running it from the back, I ran it to the front.
Yep.
So that's all I got to add.
What kind of material is that back there? Is that just dirt or is that grass or?
That is mud.
Just mud.
And it's got that yellow color just from reflection and there's no vegetation.
Yeah, that's just terrible camera work.
It's, wow, it's not terrible, but vegetation's all drowned out there.
Yeah, that used to be, that used to be all vegetation. And over a course of many years, it's gotten, you know, I mean, he's, Robert Creamy's came in there or whoever is that, in that green building has killed the weeds with whatever he's killing the weeds with, and it's completely mud.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion, then go to board deliberation.
Can we put the picture up? The aerial picture of, shows his lot, Bert, please. How about the other one that's more, it's more of a close-up?
This is the older one, but...
Is there another one where it shows his curb?
Yeah, I'm trying to find that one. Here it is.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay.
Yeah, Dave, you like that one?
Yeah. Well, if he's got plans to add on to this building and he's gonna, then that's going to dictate a site plan, which is going to dictate concrete.
Yeah.
It looks to me like, and that sounds like it could have happened sooner than later. So I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt based on, one, it looks extremely neat and tidy from here for the kind of work he does. I haven't been inside of it, but what if we were just inclined to pursue the setback to the, I'll just say the top of that picture as we're looking at it.
Yeah.
To where that curb matches up.
Right.
Goes to our right.
Right.
He moves the dumpster inside. He's got green space now. Whether he wants, you want to call that parking, storage, whatever, I say, let's leave the millings alone and let's let this thing, let's give this guy some runway so he can get his business.
I agree with you on that.
Figured it out with an addition that's going to dictate a site plan, which is going to dictate concrete, which is going to dictate, you know, an investment on his part, which I think is only going to continue to benefit the area. I'm trying to figure out where this water's going and coming from. I'm not an engineer. So I can't even pretend to think about addressing that. But I would be inclined to make a motion for something similar to that, and I'm open to what anyone else has to say from a suggestion standpoint. But he's done some pretty nice work here relative to what I can even see around the area with the neighbors.
And I'm sure Tim is kicking himself that, you know, I'm surprised your own radar didn't go off that, gee, I had this existing curb that your dad had put down and then you're bumping your neighboring property out further. But if we gave him the variance he's requested, the first variance is that 15 feet less than the 25 foot. And that would allow those two curb lines to match up. That's your first thing, right, Dave? And then the dumpster at a minimum has to be 25 foot back and screened wherever he puts it or if he doesn't put it, maybe we don't care then, right?
He could move it to the inside of his building if he didn't even care.
Yeah. But at a minimum, the dumpster just has to be placed, if it's going to be kept outside, at least 25 foot back and appropriately screened.
I understand what Bert's saying about this driveway, runway, whatever.
Yeah.
I don't think he needs to put any concrete in that milled area.
Sure. If he plans to build a new building, do you want to give him some length of time that we would grant a temporary variance, a couple of years or? Because again, we kind of had a case like earlier today. Each case has its own merits. But if he's saying, I want to expand my business and I don't need to meet site plan anyway, well, 30 years from now, if he doesn't expand the business, he may not be worried about 30 years from now. Hope he's enjoying retirement by then. But we've still got a big parking lot that doesn't meet our requirements.
I'd give him 24 months if it's going to take him 12 months to figure out what he's doing. And it could take him 12 months to get it completely built.
I don't even know if we really need that, looking at, I know what the area's like across the street.
Leave that up to you guys.
A lot of houses, doing home-based businesses that may or may not have permits. Just looking at the way he's been handling his business and the education he's received today, I don't think we need to put a timeframe on it. What if it happens to be 28 months? I am fine without it, without a time limit, just based on what I've seen and what I've heard. And the water through the place can't be just from this one lot because there's a bigger thing. I think it has to be something behind that green building besides mud. Plant some grass seed and flowers or wildflowers or something to absorb the water. But I, I'm fine with what Dave was suggesting earlier, except for having to put a timeframe on them.
And since we're at the variance level from both your perspectives, you know, is this because this would still be in general character of the neighborhood and not cause any undue burdens to neighboring owners, et cetera, et cetera?
Exactly.
Yes.
All right. It's always important to make that clear.
No, it fits in with the neighborhood. And like I said, I know the business is up and down the road and what the houses look like across the street and on the other side of that. And it fits in very well and it is one of the nicer places and he's setting a good example. So...
So run with the motion, Lynn.
So run with the motion.
I would just, if I could interject and just say that in terms of the timeline though, I do think it's important to have sort of a backstop. I mean, it sounds like from the applicant that he's pretty, he's pretty gung ho in getting something going in the next year in terms of maybe expanding. So I think, I think I would agree with Dave here in terms of the two-year to keep that in the motion.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then that we allow the variances, you know, so that the variance of 15 feet less than the 25 would be bringing that curb back in on the other side, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and allowing storage up to that. And that he removes that the pad for the cement garbage...
He's going to have it.
Pad.
He might still be having a driveway through that.
Well, I don't care about driveway. I think he keep the milling lot the same.
It really can't stay if he's going to restore the green space anyway.
Well, that's it. Yeah, well, okay. So he restores the green space for that 10-foot that we're talking about.
Plus there's the driveway.
We allow the milling and I would like to give him three years because, you know, we have elections coming up and climate can change for financing and stuff for owners, banking regulations and stuff. I've been through enough of that with my real estate thing. Sometimes things can throw in hand. So I'm going to give him three years to add on to the building or do something with the lots. So that's my motion.
Okay. All right. Well put. Is there a second?
Sure, a second.
All right. Second by Dave. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. All those opposed?
I just have concerns with the three years, but two.
Okay. So that motion carries four to two. So Tim, you've been kind of headed in the right direction. And if your business continues to improve and expand, you'll need to meet site plan anyway. So you'll be on the right track, but this will give you some time to do that.
It'll be done.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
I just want to point out, whatever happened today, the site plan is required.
Yes, yes.
If somebody discovered a maintenance, like the site plan is...
No.
It's required.
Right.
And this is, this is, I know we're done with the public discussion, so the site plan includes drainage, right?